Should be led by Mr. Green.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the board meeting, April 4th. Just to remind you, this is an emergency meeting. Yes, it's at the rear of the building. Most exits are to the rear of the building, that's locked. The other exits are to the other end of the building. According to the vehicles, these do not need or so directed by emergency service personnel. Just to remind you also, this is a non-spoke building, so we must use the outside door.
Mr. Mayor, I have a call for ordinance. The question was in March 24th.
Motion to accept board meeting from March 24th, I present it.
Mr. Mayor, I was saying from that vote, I wasn't president to make point that March 24th...
I have a sentence here, and actually since Mr. Green is in the audience, he might be able to help me correct the sentence. It says, "Is the roof for the repair of..." I don't think that's what he meant. It says, "Is the roof for the repair of the..."
The roof.
To be paid to the contractor. But I don't think that was the word roof was in the sentence twice.
Right. Yeah, I was just asking if the money that we set aside to pay the contractor was...
Would be a better word. Okay.
Right.
So that needs to be corrected.
So would you... Is that getting the motion? Motion to accept the correction.
Motion.
Second. Please.
The next minutes we approve is board meeting next April 7th, that would be the organization meeting.
A motion to accept. Those minutes as presented.
Motion. Second.
Please.
I stand, Mr. Mayor.
Stand.
Yeah.
And the third meeting, board meeting minutes are meetings on April 7th, that would be the rest of the board meeting.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Any changes, solutions? Please. I'm stammered by prosthetic keys. You had them stammered by prosthetic keys, good question.
Yes.
Treasure. Hello, everybody. Bills tonight are totaling $646,664.42. The largest of those bills was PSENG for electric services, $38,514.4. The Masco, which was rubberized crack sealing, that's the seal of cracks in roadways, not the big hole, just a crack, $18,800. Third one is American Recreation, we're putting some shade structures in our parks, $12,473. East Resource Recycling for Refugees, $11,461.14. And Agio, which is the repairing of sewer extension project, $10,014.37. And they total $91,300.5. Do you have approval?
Motion to accept, is presented. Motion. Any questions? Second.
Second.
Please.
Aye.
I do have a small budget transfer, request for BID fund transfer from parking to salaries of $1,100.
Motion. Second. Please. Please.
Aye. The last item I have is a request for approval for the general fund to loan the community development fund $6,277. Anyone ask just payroll and I'll give reverse.
Motion.
Next week.
Second. Please.
That's all I have.
Okay, there are no special hearings. I'd like a motion to accept the second amendment to an agreement between Incorporated Village of Patchogue, the Patchogue Sewer District, and Old Blue Point LLC. Old Blue Point LLC, the vineyards up on Sunrise Highway of Blue Point, they have contracted with us for an out-of-village, out-of-district connection. Part of that connection is a $2 million fee that we'll be getting for them for the right to hook in, basically a key money choice. Those payments are steps in a certain manner that where they're looking for an amendment to change, not to the amount, but to the...
Sequence and timing of the payment.
The sequence and timing of the payments. We had initially... To give you a little bit of history to it, I'll get the page so I can do correctly. The first, initially it was at $125,000, which we received upon execution of the contract. And that was about five years ago. And then the second part of that was $375,000, in 10 days after construction of any aspect. As soon as they begin to go dirt, they owe a payment of $375. Then $1.5 million within 10 days after issuing building permits, and they are prorated by the number of permits. Obviously, when the economy went bad in 2008, the project stopped, but we still... What the initial $125,000 was about was for us to hold the capacity for what they're requesting. It is being changed to, they're asking again for an extension. But that extension will be getting $125,000 of the $375 within 14, in fact, within 14 days of this amendment. In other words, in two weeks from now, we'll be receiving a check of $125,000. And then, once they begin to go dirt and they begin construction, then we'll get to $250,000. It's basically the same thing, except we're getting more money up from them right now to gain for the right to amend the contract and to continue to reserve that capacity. And at the end of the project, like I indicated, we'll have gotten about, we'll have gotten $2 million towards our sewer system. So all this is doing is allowing us to get $125,000 in two weeks from now and to keep the capacity reserved for this project and this development. Now, part of this, just an aside to this, is that, and a part of the agreement is that they will run the sewer lines from their site, the old movie theater site, the vineyards, to the sewer plant. There was no expense coming out of us at all. It is just financial support to the sewer plant. And I think they were at Trump's 75% of the approval.
$280,000, I think, with your original approval.
Right. But so this is just an agreement for us to extend it, but there's a payment for us to do that. We just don't do it on ancient. Any questions by the board?
Well...
Yeah?
How much potassium in this guy's...
We don't have the gallantage in the amendment, but the gallantage has been long reserved. So that's part of the reason why they wanted the extension. When the project went on hold, they asked you to... By, even by the First Amendment, the extension ran out April 15th, 2014, which is tomorrow. So they wanted to have an extension for three years. The only difference is that we're not partners on commercial ventures. We are a municipality who have needs and pressures on our sewer plant to move that other ways to maximize the value of our sewer chicken plant. So to reserve the gallantage with only $125,000 payment, the mayor felt connected with it. So we requested an additional $125,000 payment out of the original schedule to advance that payment to reserve for three quarters.
And when these residences are actually up and ready for that $280...
And the sewer?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, absolutely correct, yes.
Is this the key mon...
Yes.
This is the key money charge.
At least, you know, one of the things that, when we built the sewer plant, is we budgeted it. There's a $3 million note for the environmental facilities corporation, EFC, towards that plant. And we've been able to use key money to pay down that note, therefore not having paid the tax. The most taxpayer on Main Street, the sewer districts, with that money, we're able to do it through the green necessities. A motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Please.
Aye.
So we got a check of $125,000 to access. One of the things we need to do at the beginning of every year is request approval for standard work-in reporting resolution for elected appointed officials. It's something that needs to be done every year for the state retirement system. It's just, it's more than, it needs to be on a resolution. A motion to accept.
Motion. Second.
Second.
Please.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to request a reprimanding board for a change of zone of 205 South Russian Avenue, All Town Hall. As per 743, they're stemming through the village code. 205 South Russian Avenue is the old Kaden Town Hall, which Mayor Trustee Creed has been working on and still working on. And there is an agreement between a purchaser and the town. But the way it was zoned, it wasn't zoned for office. It was zoned for residential, and it was just, for whatever the reason, 1927 and 1953. Built 1927, 1953, they put zoning code in. Why they zoned it the way they did, I don't know. But prior to us, prior to them purchasing it, I believe is a pair of them that we put in place to correct zoning for the property, which is, would be D-jo. It'll go from C, which is...
Yeah. C residents.
C residents.
Part of it, part of it, small piece is industrial, and the front is RBO.
But specifically, you get the C residents change to D-jo. So a motion to refer this to the board.
Motion. Second. Please.
Aye.
BID. You can... Mr. Mayor, Trustees, Mayor Clerk, Attorney Egan, Treasure Cross, Dennis Smith will be Business Improvement District reporter. I'd like to first start by congratulating Trustee Felice on your election. And we welcome you to the board. We look forward to working with you. I don't believe that that being Mayor, Creed, or his money for anything. So you don't have to go there. Congratulations also to the entire board, the mayor and the entire board, for the positive press that we got on Tuesday yesterday.
Thank you.
Very positive comment on Patchogue, well deserved, and it's always good to see and read it up.
I'm going to start with the New York Main Street update. 85 East Main Street, which is Goldberg's Dangles, we've been trying to close that out for about a month now. I finally received the declaration from the building owner today, so we can proceed with that and hopefully in the next couple of weeks get him paid off. And that would be the first project that we ever closed out with this grid. 2 East Main Street, Budget Biassell, we did an interior there, came out beautifully. He's done, we put the paperwork in since two weeks ago. We're hoping to get the closeout okay in the next couple of weeks, and that will be the second project that we'll have completed. 66 through 74 East Main Street, which is the jewelers on the shoe store, which we've been working on for probably about eight or nine months now. We're finally making some positive progress because the weather is working with us. I think you've noticed in the last week, we're putting the brick facade on the front. So we're making good progress there. We hope to have the front of that out of the way in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll look to the second floor upstairs and see what we can do up there. That was part of the agreement that we had with the building owner. 200 East Main Street, another interior renovation, that Medhi Health Clinic. They started about four weeks ago. I checked it out about a week ago, they were 90 percent complete. I anticipate they're probably complete now, I'll check it out the next couple of days. And we'll be looking to close that project out as well. 26 East Main Street, I know I mentioned the last couple of times I spoke, we thought we might have a problem doing loans, we're going to rethink that project. We're going to do the exterior portion with the grant monies, which is the front entrance. He wants to redo his windows in the front of the entranceway. And he wants to do some work on the back entrance as well, so we're going to partner a little bit of help with that. So that will still be a viable project, even though I thought a couple of weeks ago we might have lost that one. We didn't, we're going to make it work. 46 East Main Street, which is just the years, they've got to go, they're not starting yet. I think there's going to be a potential change there. And I think they're kind of looking to see what the change is going to be before they proceed with the renovation on the three exterior facade walls. They have to get it started by May, May or June, or else they're not going to stay within the parameters of the grant itself. We have two applications that are out there. 1204 East Main Street is working through the process. I talked with the architect last week. They've got a nice plan for the facade of that building, it's coming along nicely.
Which building is that?
124 is the Olive Tree Restaurant and La Isla Deli slash Restaurant. They're going to do a whole new facade, there's going to be more glass. Look enough, there's aluminum siding on the top of there. So we're going to get rid of that, we're going to put some pipe in up there. It's going to be new warnings, new signs, more glass work. There's going to be brickwork on the columns, so it's going to be a nice upgrade when we get finished with it. And hopefully we'll get that started again by the beginning of June. I've had an inquiry from 20 East Main Street for a possible interior renovation. That is the storefront that's in proximity where Irish Crossroads used to be. Does that do storefront in that building? It's next to the Budget Biassell building. There's an eye glass concern that's looking to go in there. He's looking to do some interior renovation, possibly something with the entranceway to the front. We do have some $10,000 that's not earmarked at this point in time, so if they choose to apply for that, they would be more than welcome to submit the application and we'll proceed from there. With that having said, I've got two things going on simultaneously. The sidewalk project on East Main Street is still a go. We had hoped to have the start date for April 21st. Unfortunately, that's going to be moved back by about three, four weeks, simply because we couldn't get the escrow process in order in time to get that done. We need the monies to come from the building owners, we're going to hold in escrow. We're going to do the project, we're going to have their money, put the CBA money in there as well, and get that project done. I think Trustee Keys is going to speak to that a little bit later.
I'm sorry. Are you going to be asking proof?
I am.
And if there's any questions on that, I might be able to help you out as well.
Don't go to this many, I'm not American, all right?
Yeah, I'm not going, I'm just doing... Just as far as I'm going with that portion of the East Main Street sidewalk project. What I will say though, is that the beautification monies that we have from this last grant, we're looking to put two garden area trees slash shrub pits in that vicinity. And what we're looking to do is we're looking to make a six-foot by 12-foot garden area in front of Burlington, and a six-foot by eight-foot garden area in front of the Lenz property, which is where you have the bigger expansives of sidewalk, where you can do that. We're not going to put a ride on a curb, they're going to come behind the pavers, you know, depending upon the mockouts and what's on the ground. But they're going to be in that general vicinity there. There's going to be a tree, some shrubs, we're going to put benches on either side. We're going to get an 18-inch wrought iron fencing to go around it, so it stays protected. We're going to put the bevels in the fencing, so that it's not a skateboard target. When we get done, I think it's going to look really, really good. We've enlisted Paul and Paul Murphy and Karen Ferb to come up with some of the, not only the design, but the plant isn't actually in there. I'm talking to landscapers and people with the wrought iron fence to get quotes on that and to get that piece of it going. So, once the sidewalks are in, we're looking to take the beautification portion in a couple of weeks after that, put that in, we're going to look right down there. And again, we're going to put the contracts in for future period lighting, which hopefully we'll have sooner rather than later. Security cameras, I had a meeting scheduled last week with a new concern. It was Marco Lessie, he had a contact that he wanted to get into the bidding slash court process. Unfortunately, he couldn't make last Wednesday, we've got a plan for this Wednesday. That'll be our second set of quotes on the security cameras that we are looking to put in at least three locations throughout the village. I will get at least one more quote, and then we'll sit down and make a decision as to who we're going to go and how we're going to get there, who we're going to go with and how we're going to get there. The bid annual meeting, let me do that, because we're incorporated once a year. It's scheduled for June 17th, 2014, 4 o'clock, in this room. I put it on the calendar today. And if it pleases the board, I'm going to ask to give my annual report to this board on June the 9th, which is basically that first Monday in June, which is when I usually do. So if that's a good date, we'll go with that. Unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have. I'll go away. I'll be, I'll be back. Hold up the rear, thank you.
Evening, everybody. And I also would like to extend my congratulations on behalf of the chamber to Trustee Felice. We welcome you and we look forward to working with you. Also want to extend a welcome to our trustee Tom Ferb. I know that trustee Ferb is going to be our new liaison for the chamber as well, so I look forward to working with you in that capacity as well. All right, so let's start, and finally, I guess we could all thankfully say St. Patrick's events in Patchogue are finally behind us. But I do want to, you know, I think it was a smart decision that we did push it off a week, even though it put us into April, it turned out to be a glorious, beautiful sunny day. We had a wonderful crowd, and it was a great event. I really want to extend my thanks to trustee Hilton and Maria and Luanne in the Parks Department. We couldn't run the race without you, the work you guys did was tremendous. Everybody in the village, trustee, village clerk, SEAL, for her help as the emcee as well that evening. So it was a great event, and I really appreciate all the help from the village. So the next event we got coming up is next week, we have our annual beautification fundraiser. And we do give two opportunities for you to, for everybody to participate. We do have a lunch and a dinner component involved with this fundraiser. It's taking place Wednesday, April 23rd, at the Harbor Crab aboard their Barefoot Princess. You can just contact the chamber office for anybody who would like to purchase tickets. This is their one fundraiser of the year, the Beautification Committee. They do so many tremendous projects for us throughout the village to make the village look beautiful. And one of the current projects we got going that the Beautification Committee is doing is the memorial bench project, which has been very successful. They got four more benches ready to go, they're working on a couple of more. But one we're really working hard on is a bench to honor the Patchogue Fire Department. We are about the halfway mark of raising the money for that bench, where we could still use some more funds. And whether it's a small donation or large, they're accepted. $10, $20, anybody in the public, you know, we really want to put the call out and do a proper notice with a memorial bench for our fire department as well. And at the beautification dinner and luncheon, we will be doing our annual 50/50 raffle. And that committee has decided to use that raffle money to go towards the Stotteringer Arch. That's another beautification project that's looking to get some more money. We'll have some information about it there. And this would be a nice iron archway across the L.B. Stotteringer walkway. And again, trustee Ferb has been very instrumental in making all this happen. Next, I want to do a highlight, you've got one more week. If you haven't got your guesses in, in all the 20 different locations of jelly beans throughout the town, there's 20 different participating locations. Each one has its own jar of jelly bean, you can make a guess in each. If you win at that store, you get a gift certificate or a prize at that store. And the winners from each location will be then put into a new pool for a $100 prize as well. So one more week, back to this weekend, and then we'll be doing the drawing. Next on our agenda, as everybody should be aware by now, the Chamber of Commerce is working with a very important organization known as the Suffolk County Coalition Against Domestic Violence. They hold a very, a very, a nice fun event, a pet parade, which we did last September. This will be the second time that we're doing it. Though it's a fun event, it is a very serious issue. It is to raise awareness for the Coalition and their campaign against domestic violence. All the proceeds that are raised do go to the Coalition. But certainly, most of the funds are raised through the pets that will enter. It's a $10 entrance fee. You can look on our website to sign up or contact the chamber office. And if it's as good as it was last year, it's just, it's another fun event to go down Main Street. I'd also want to make notice on May the 18th. Temple Beth Bell is honoring one of our chamber members and a very important member of the community, that's Richard Blaisley of the Oar. So that's going to be a great luncheon fundraiser on May the 18th, and I want everybody from the community as well as the village board to come on down for that. Next, let me highlight, last week was the annual Brookhaven Chamber of Commerce Coalition. They had their annual dinner. And they do an annual award to a chamber based on applications that are made for a particular project. The Patchogue Chamber joined forces with the Velport Chamber this year and did win a $1,000 grant for a discount card program. It's going to be a discount card that's going to be offered by both Velport and Patchogue that will get you discounts in all different stores in both communities. So it's a way to kind of make it a little bit more interesting for people, that they'll have two different communities that they can go shopping and get discounts through this discount card. We're then able to amass a nice list of patrons of Patchogue that we can continue to market to and update about current events that are going on in the community. And holders of that card will be able to participate in some special deals and special events that we'll do throughout the year as well. So we're hoping to launch this by June the 1st. Do look for that and sign up and get yourself your Patchogue Velport discount card. And just a couple other things before I finish my report. I am aware that May the 1st is really wanting to cut off all the testimony for the Sandwich Board signs. And a whole thing I would request is that if there is a proposal that's going to be voted on, that I get a chance to pass it out to that committee to look at first, just in case they have any questions or concerns prior, I would appreciate that. And then the last thing, you know, with parking, obviously. I know the last few weeks is when the village really started to go out there and, you know, find those that are in violation of our parking rules. Of course, people getting tickets creates an angry person here and there, and usually the anger gets directed towards the business owner. And some of our business owners have raised some new concerns based on some of the feedback they're getting on that. I know there's a couple of our members, including our president Jackie, that is organizing some of the business owners that have some concerns. And probably will come in down to the next village board meeting to address the board, to bring up those concerns. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, and it's to be expected. These are the growing pains, I think, you would expect with parking meters. I think everybody understands that. But, you know, I really appreciate the village has been very responsive to the chamber and to the business people, and I appreciate your patience and, you know, as they come next week to discuss that.
Well, David, if I could just interrupt, why do you mention parking meters? What we're going to do is, I spoke to the mayor and a few other people here, and trustee Keith. We're going to put up initial signage that say metered parking strictly enforced.
In red.
In red. On the sign, so...
On the existing signs.
Signpost is not one with a sign Nazi. We'll tell you, you put something, our people don't read it, yeah. And we need something that's just very clear that says metered parking, that's it. So it's understood. You know, I think we've put up too many signs, it's the Borough Queens over the West.
Now, I think, I think on both sides, but everybody's trying to work with it, it's something that's needed. We need to raise the revenue to get to parking, I think everybody understands it. But, you know, even the business people is going along, I think they're going along. But when you start getting a couple patrons that come in and they complain a little bit or express themselves a little bit, they get concerned. So I just, I think they just need a voice to be heard a little bit on some of the things that have been happening now that it's taking place.
Well, we've had people tell us that they can't, they didn't see the signs. So I think that adding those additional signs will help people's vision so they can see the signs and understand that it's metered. So Joe's going to work on that, get those done, and we'll get those up right away.
Beautiful, thank you, I really appreciate that. And that's really everything, unless anybody has any questions for me, that's my report.
David, I just want to compliment the great Patchogue Foundation and Beautification Committee, and the generosity of the chamber members and residents of the village. We have two benches out there. We've got five at DPW. We've got one more in order, and the Stotteringer Arch. It's $20,000. No taxpayer money, all personal contributions. It's really good.
Yeah, now, I appreciate your efforts, and your wife Karen, that you had a fantastic job with that committee, Paul Murphy. It's really, the two...
I met the men, they're saying it.
They do it all. So again, you know, I want to really highlight, next Wednesday, April 23rd, the Harbor Crab has put together a great, beautiful lunch menu, a beautiful dinner menu. It's a great time to get out in the community, and all the money goes to great causes, so. All right, everybody have a great night.
David, thank you very much, appreciate it. David McCreary.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give a brief theater report.
I'd like to give a brief theater report, just to let everybody know the roof. Roof itself is complete. I'm sure, I think tomorrow night we're going to have a good test of whether it holds up to some rain and some foul weather. But if you get to ride past it here and look up, you'll see it's a beautiful roof and gutters, everything's in there. But as all these jobs are, there's always change orders. And I have a change order request here for, to reroute fresh air intake of the theater.
The issue with that is, the cloud wire is, the old intake went up through the roof itself. The roofing company is recommending that we don't pierce the roof to put that in, but we route it through the wall. That we shouldn't, you know, cut into what we just developed.
Yeah, I think what it does is if you cut into the roof, the integrity of the roof starts to lessen once you start cutting into it. So our roof down will be completely solid, no holes in the wall. So that's a change order, cost of ten thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. Motion to accept?
Motion, second.
Second.
A little favor?
Aye.
John Ashland, executive director, has said this is more construction than wonderful. They just really have done it as least intrusive way they can in terms of the businesses of the long side. Plus, they're actually working, like, with these air productions going on.
Yeah. They've done a great job and I thank them and Alex, that little man Dave, who was the engineer on the job, he did a terrific job, very, very, worked well with the theater. Are you going to mention anything about the Great South Bay Music Festival?
I'd like to.
Oh, thank you. Well, I just, I don't know if everybody saw the news, but recently Jim Faith, who's doing the Great South Bay Music Festival, the final night headliner is BBK. So it's a very big, it's going to be a very big night down there. So I just want to let everybody know that, that, you know, the festival has really now stepped it up to another level by getting an established star like that enough hot tuna. Although I like them.
I'm stealing.
So, yeah, it's going to be a great night. Parking report, David kind of gave the parking report. I was going to mention it too, that we're out there, we're giving tickets. So if you are a business owner, worry. And a customer comes in and says, should I put money in the meter? We want everybody to say yes, please put money in the meter. We are enforcing it. Our enforcement is up a great deal. And of course, we do get the concerns from some people who don't understand it or, you know, didn't see the signs and things like that. And we're also getting, you know, requests for more fifteen minute parking, which we took care of. Our friends over at Waltons there gave them another fifteen minute space. And Dave, if you hear anybody else who needs things like that, let me, I'm confident you'll let me know. We also did some sign, sign changes.
Adjustments.
Adjustments to the lot by, you got me called Paradise Lot. Behind.
Jack, guess how many people know where the Paradise?
Does anybody know where the Paradise Lot is?
We do that.
Where Paradise Lunch and that used to be.
Joe remembers that.
Yeah, Joe remembers. Yeah. It's behind Delphiore's Pork Store, that area. We changed some of the spaces to not park before eight AM. We got a request from one of the business owners there, so trustee Keith. Yeah, yeah, trustee, trustee Keith. A lot of Tri-Tech guys are still parking in that area, want to get that, you know, stop that. But also employees are parking in spaces that we want to keep open. We took care of.
They all seem pretty satisfied now.
Yeah, I think so. I think so. So we're making adjustments to this as we go along, and I think adjustments for the better. So if anybody's got a concern, maybe a lawyer or a warrior, people come into your store and say, thanks, please, passing my way, so we can accommodate certain, not going to have to do every request, but whatever is reasonable, we're going to try and help. I have a request approval for, to have amplified music at 206 Bay Avenue Garden Party held on Friday, April 25th, from Dear Jcreen. Do you want to explain what this is to the board? Give your name and address, please. I missed you yesterday morning.
Good evening. I'm Dear Jcreen and I live at 206 Bay Avenue. And on Friday, April 25th, I'm hoping to have a garden party to celebrate my birthday. And at my party, I would like to have live amplified music. So some of my friends who are good musicians will have the opportunity to play for our other friends.
Sounds good.
Does your body open all the Avenue residents?
For a small fit.
Well, you bring a press. I have to bring a minimal because that would be.
We don't have to weigh the alcohol. They write jokes.
It's the seventeenth of December.
The seventeenth of November. Do you remember?
From four PM to nine PM, right?
Yes.
Make a motion, second. All set. Happy birthday.
Fun, happy birthday.
Good luck, Dad.
Thanks.
I'd like to request approval for National Building and Roofing Supplies Inc. to have a home fair at 400 West Main Street on Saturday, May 17th with a rain date of May 24th. They're going to be, vendors from National will be present to display various products offered by National at a reduced cost to residents. There'll be prizes and giveaways offered by vendors along with face painting and other activities offered to the children as parents enjoy working with various products. For Mike Posey, you got a motion?
Second.
Second. Is that it? That's it? Trustee Keith?
Mr. Mayor, all board members, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to officially welcome trustee South Felice to the board. I was in there last week, but I'm certainly looking forward to working with him. The last two years, I've tried to swipe Jerry Queen's pen. He's got a great pen, South. I'm on the cheap side. I hope somebody has noticed, some of you have noticed that the sidewalks on Smith Street is part of our storefront-to-shorefront campaign. We've completed the installation of sidewalks on Smith Street from Bay Avenue to South Ocean. Hopefully, over the next several years, we're going to keep working on the completion of sidewalks from Main Street all the way down to Smith Street, especially on Bay and Cedar and South Ocean, and kind of make it a walkable, attractive walkable track from our storefronts to Bushland. The East Main Street Agreement, which I know Smith touched on a little bit, I'm glad he's still here, requesting approval to accept an ESCO agreement that we made, attorney again that had drawn up for us. Dennis has been in touch pretty much with all the property owners down there. They all are in agreement with what we've worked out. It initially was, it is a CDA BID project. However, this agreement will involve the Village Board, and you may have to explain a little more on that, there will be a taxing if there's an issue with payment or anything. So that's why it involves the Village Board, you know, and not just the CDA. I will read into the record, an email that I received from executive director Marion Musso, which may explain things a little better than I'm doing right now. The CDA is undertaking a replacement of the sidewalks on East Main Street from Ryder Avenue to the post office. The building department has issued sidewalk violations to the property owners in the project area. Jade Co Construction has been selected as a contractor off a county contract. Dennis Smith has coordinated the contact with the property owners and they have agreed to pay into ESCO their portion of the cost of the project. The village attorney drafted an ESCO agreement. Approval of the ESCO agreement by the board of trustees is sought, so I will move to approve that agreement. I just want to make one notice from email exchange that Dennis and I had today, just so that people know ahead of time, of the Napa building, as you know, these sidewalks were kind of damaged there. As part of this entire project, it will eventually be replaced with a concrete sidewalk. However, for the timing, until there's a building there, the contracting will make, you know, the adjustments that it needs to make to make the ground level. But for the timing, use a blacktop asphalt sidewalk. When Napa constructs, Napa constructs, when the property owner constructs for the Napa building was, then they will put the concrete down. It doesn't make, it's kind of costing that to concrete now, and then two, three years and maybe even less than that, rip concrete up, rip that up and do it again. So, because it will be damaged with construction. So we'd rather damage blacktop, which is a lot cheaper, obviously, to replace, and then put concrete down in its place. So I am requesting approval of that ESCO agreement, this, just for the record, in case anybody wants to know these properties in the group. The Napa building, the Francis Fitness Building, Sherwin-Wings Building, the Many Health Building, the Burlington Coat Factory, and the Gordon Lash property, which is the, I can't explain it.
The Linliss or.
Thank you. Yeah, that's right. So I'm requesting approval for that agreement.
Any other comments?
Very excited.
Yeah, it's long overdue. It's been one of the ISOs for quite a while now and, you know, when that's done, it's going to connect. You know, I have a feeling you may want trees in when that, someone told me that you may want trees.
I had to put the trees in before the sidewalk was done because the block was up. We kept delaying and delaying. We finally had.
But it is going to be nice. I suppose Smith worked very hard on it.
Precisely.
Joe, actually, it's going to go from the law office right next to the post office. And the reason why they're not mentioning the agreement is their law comes out to the public portion of the sidewalk. So it's going to be basically from the law office next to the post office down through Napa, but the blacktop proposition that the mayor came up with, I was very thankful for that, is going to be on the corner. That's going to be the last piece that, you know, they'll correct when they put the building up.
Yes, did you speak to the property owners?
I did. The ones that are involved?
No.
Signature partners?
Yeah.
He's on vacation. I sent him an email today and told him what we proposed to do. And he was, and I told him we're just proposing at this point, you know, it's a thought. And he was very appreciative of that. We were looking for some kind of a compromise. Because he would have had to spend the fifty or a hundred dollars knowing that he was going to rip it up again in between one and two years when the building went in there. So this is a much better solution.
And part of the issue is, is that sidewalks are so unlevelled, they're not leveled off from one to the other.
It's like a thirty inch disparity between Francis Fitness and him.
Exactly. And so we just need to do it so it's not a hazard. And then when the concrete goes in the later date, they'll bring it tight.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. A little favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval to set Johnson Electric Construction Corporation for the traffic signal maintenance contract. I mean, that's a contract that we have with them for many years now, just a continuation of that.
Motion.
Second.
A little favor?
Aye.
Requesting approval to order for the machine shop services to South Bay Machine Shop, 275 Elsberg Street, Holbrook, New York. If you recall, we did have a one-year contract that lived with them. We sought to make a three-year contract with the machine shop. This is the same company that came in, it's a lowest bid, most successful bid. We're satisfied with them, so I'm requesting approval to order the bid to that.
Second.
Second.
A little favor?
Thank you. I'm requesting approval tonight to set the salary at fourteen dollars per hour for temporary labor when performed sanitation labor duties effective four fifteen twenty fourteen. There are times, obviously, when we have to take some attempts and put them on trucks and do some sanitation work, and they should be paid.
Motion, second.
Second.
A little favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval tonight to set the garbage rate for condominiums at five hundred dollars per year as opposed to what they were paying. The reason being, number one, there's always that, you know, we want to keep them on those taxable and not make it too easy for them to go to an outside contractor, which they certainly have the right to do. However, when you look at what it takes to pick up garbage in a condominium complex as opposed to our private homes, it's a great difference. Our crews can cover sixty units, sixty condo units in about fifteen minutes as opposed to maybe over an hour to do, you know, a regular household pickup. There's no backyard pickup, obviously. There's never rush, you know, with that kind of degree. It's just a much lighter load for them to do it. And as I said, we much prefer keeping them on our, on our tax basis rather than let a contractor. We'd rather let them go to an outside contractor to do the garbage pickup.
Bay Village, for instance, they have the one-overs where they have, you know, they have the first and second floor. They have corrals at the end. Garbage truck pulls up to the corral, they empty stuff in and they go. They do about a third of their properties are that. So they have twenty units that it's a single stop. And all the other ones are not backdoor, they bring the cans to the curb. And when you take a look at that, you take a look at doing sixty homes on a block like Cedar Avenue, takes a bit apart of an hour, like trustee Keith said. When you begin to look at the cost and the ability to get it done, that's a number that works, bringing it down to the five hundred and sixteen. So question for the board.
How much would it be if they went to a private park? How much would the village lose?
If all of the condos, for them alone down there?
Sixteen instead of six hundred. Sixteen instead of six hundred.
Well, let's put it this way, at this rate, you lose about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And if you take all of the condos themselves, at five hundred dollars, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So it's a significant, it's a significant number. And I think it's extremely important. Then it's also a fairness one. You know, we charge based upon the work that you do. You charge people based upon that. You don't charge, it's like with senior citizens. Senior citizens, discount on rent fees is twenty-five percent. Because more senior citizens, very much one bag, two bags. It's not a family of, a family of four that has three cans, you know, every other day. So the reason you give them that discount to seniors is because of the mortgage. This is very similar to that.
So I'm requesting approval, that's a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A little favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Felice?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't have the housing report yet. I will have it at the next meeting. But I did speak with the senior building inspector, Peter Sarge. I spoke at length with him this past week. We spoke about past, present, and future projects that are going to be coming up in the Golden Patch though. And there are a lot of things, not in fact, he was in a hurry that day. He was going out to do an inspection at the Tri-Tech project and he kind of cracked a little joke. He says, look, you know, when I go there to do one inspection, it usually turns out to be about sixty-eight. But, so I'm really looking forward to working with him. I will have a full report at the end of the month, which will be the next meeting we have. And we also spoke about the possibility of having new software for the building and housing department, which he just came back from a conference and he saw a program. And actually, Mayor Panieri had sent me over to see a program with the fire department and the ambulance company. It's like a pre-planned system. They would all come inside together, like if the fire department shows up and lets just say thirty-one double lane and they have fire there or something, that would automatically go into this, into this program. And the building inspector would be able to see that immediately, you know, and vice versa. If he showed up and he saw a blocked stairway, he could put that in his report. If the fire departments don't like to go to that address, they would see that immediately that this stairway is blocked. So it's a really nice program. It's in the early stages right now. We're looking at a couple of different ones. So we'll see which way that's going to go. But I will have the full report next meeting on that. At this time, I'd like to pass a resolution to increase the pay for the court offices from one hundred dollars per session to a hundred and twenty-five dollars per session. Now, these people are professional, you know, what's the word? Court, court officers. Some are retired police officers. They carry firearms. They're there to keep order. They keep things streamlined in the courtroom. So I'm just looking to give them a little boost because they often show up early, have to stay late. So just to give them a little bit extra boost, I'd like to make a motion to increase that to a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Motion, second. David?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees. First of all, we, you all know who's standing before us. You know, they're, they're the rating agency that, that determines what our rating is and at what rates we can borrow with. And we got a reaffirm, reaffirmation of our double A rating with a stable outlook, which is about as good as we can do. And it, it has a real material consequence on borrowing. It's about a point. You know, you get rates for ten, twenty, thirty years of borrowing, and it's, it's almost a point difference between the, the next lower rating, which if you accumulate that amount of money over a period of time, it's a lot of money. The second thing I have is just sort of a promise. We, we had a, we had a budget meeting recently, and, you know, we have a modest tax increase, and we have a six hundred thousand dollar deficit. It's about five percent. It's not, it's not an astronomical amount of money. But we're, we're not going to wait till next year to deal with that deficit. We're gonna, we're gonna talk to the mayor. We're gonna, myself, the mayor, fellow trustees. We're gonna try to find some ways to get that number in. And so I'll be coming back to, whenever, whenever we have a good idea, that's going to save us money.
Right.
I get the privilege of telling you about it.
You're the money guy.
You cost us money. Why can't you use cheap basketball? Why can't you?
We tried that.
Yeah, I know.
Now, the, uh, when we first came, came into office in two thousand and four, a little bit of a bug junk fun, with very little money in surplus, and a deficit required a year. So I feel very good about where we're at, where we've come. And when you read through what they, you know, in our opinion, budgetary discipline remains very strong, with reserves of one twenty-three percent expenditures over the past several years, and no plans to spend that significantly. We're at, we're at two thirty reserves. And in our review, noble budgetary performance is strong, with a four point four percent surplus of a four percent turnover. It, it tells a story about how to manage your money. So, you know, I think that we're in very good shape financially. But I think as we look to the future, and I think Thomas talked about it, Mr. Burm's talked about it a number of times, that when all of the, the river water, water is in the line, when Tri-Tech finishes up, I think we'll, we'll see where that six hundred thousand we put in to, as a, as a tax civilization, we may not have to do it anymore. That's the goal, Mr. Burm, that we can have a very, if we need any tax increases, a very moderate investment. Trustee, tell.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Trustee's South East. I'm a fellow too, working with you. I have some good news. Those of you that come to the meetings will recall that several months ago, I was working on a grant application, a joint venture between Patchogue Arts Council and the BID. This was a grant that the county came up with. These are cultural arts grants that are financed with the hotel motel tax, so that's where that money comes from. And the idea is to put the money back into the community and back into our downtowns to attract more tourism. So this grant was called Destination Downtown. It was only available to arts councils. So there's eight arts councils on Long Island, and they were two pools of money, twenty-five thousand dollars. And the idea was to promote transit-oriented development, and to promote downtowns, and to promote the arts in such a way that would bring people into the village or, you know, a location that came under the definition of a downtown. So Patchogue Arts Council applied. I wrote the grant application with the support of the bid, who was going to be our partner in this venture. And we got the letter last week that the cultural arts, cultural arts, I think it's the board, it's a group of individuals that make these decisions every year, read through the applications, and we are one of the two that are being sent to the county legislature for approval. So I believe it's just a rubber stamp that the county legislator approves it, the county executive signs off on it, and then the Patchogue Arts Council and the BID will be putting on this all the Hack Map Festival in downtown Patchogue. So all that hard work and the, the.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're very much looking forward to it. Linda had already written an article in the advance, so some of you have probably seen some of the ideas we have. But we're going to be working with the restaurants to upscale and use it that week. I believe it's the week of October nineteenth. We're going to be seeking proposals from artists to do outdoor installations in key locations, such as the Capital One Plaza, within New Village and the Village Green, the Garden Club Gardens. So we have a lot of key locations for outdoor arts. And then we're going to have coordinated gallery shows and other artistic ventures. And we'll also be doing some things with Plaza Mac that are a little bit different from what they normally do in terms of film, probably upstairs at the Brick House. There'll be a lot of promotion. Most of the money is going to go to the promotion of the event. And that's what we really needed for us to bring people into town. Second group of grants were under five thousand dollars for organizations that weren't arts councils or groups of artists. So I wrote a grant application for the artists of Art Space, and they needed a fiscal sponsor under the terms of the grant. So the CDA was their fiscal sponsor, and we asked for five thousand dollars to do a mural on the wall of Stanley's Furniture in the road walkway, and we were awarded a thousand dollars. But still something. And, and we believe we can get it done. We'll raise a little bit of money. We have some ideas for maybe having people sponsor cans of paint. And the artist now working on the plant, Marion Russo, had asked that it reflect the road walkway's history, the road tape factory, and have kind of the tape measure being gone throughout. So we have four artists from Art Space that are working on the project.
What you need to do in terms of risk sponsor.
Yeah, we're going to go, one idea that we have is to go to Sherwin Williams, see what their corporate policy is. They may have some giving, but maybe we can set something up where somebody can come down and plunk down their thirty dollars and sponsor a can of paint. And then when we have all those names of the other murals, that's one idea. Boy, we'll, we'll talk about it. So they're excited. So that's two, two artistic ventures that'll be taking place in downtown.
Laurie, what's the time horizon for that? Best guess.
For the mural? It has to be done this year.
Okay.
So we have to.
You know, the beautification committee just started today.
Right.
On the arch.
On the arch.
On the road walkway.
Okay. Did they make a choice because Marion showed us some of the designs?
No, that's the style of the arch. It's a brand new design for the road walkway.
Oh, okay.
Which will involve.
Which will involve the tape.
You know, Mr. Rowe, you have the tape.
Right. I have one. I bought it on eBay.
Do you have it?
Yes. It says Patchogue on it.
And that's cool. But they have five factories around the world. I mean, it's amazing.
They haven't moved that.
Yeah. And so they're going to have an arch with a tape measure and surveyors tools.
That's great. That's exciting.
So it would be great if we could sync it up.
Yeah, so I don't really complete, complete everything. And thank you, David Kennedy, for helping me talk to the owner of Stanley's Furniture. He agreed and gave us the letter to have permission to do it.
You know, it'd be nice to have that done by the time you do your awards.
It would be nice, yeah.
You then have to bench the.
And then I just have one more thing to report. Some of you have noticed that Luang Thai Restaurant is no longer in the building, and we have a proposal that's coming before the planning board. Rumba Rum, which is a restaurant located in Hampton Bays, and they have a second restaurant called Cow Fid. They're seeking to open a second Rumba Rum here in Patchogue. They specialize, from what I understand, in Caribbean cuisine and rum drinks. And Rum, you said you've, you know the one in Hampton Bays?
He's a client of mine.
And it's very good?
Excellent.
So I've, I've heard good things about their operation, and we're happy they're coming to Patchogue. So that'll be the next planning board meeting, uh, last Tuesday.
Did you see the one?
I know. I love Luang.
They retired.
That's true, that they retired.
They went to Thailand.
Yeah.
Wait, they hit the best doll in the movie?
They look like kings.
Uh, that's all I have for tonight.
Trustee Hilton, again, I'll thank the brave one.
Yeah, that was, that was.
You guys did a great job. You and Maria.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it.
The, uh, yeah, Maria, the man, and LaMonte.
Yep.
Don, wind-up guy. And Highway Department was wonderful with the cones and barricades. The chamber, unfortunately, we were able to bill for most of our expenses, which is a great thing.
Yep.
And it worked out very well. The ring date was perfect. So I just want to thank everybody. Moving on, this Saturday is the Bunny Run at twelve o'clock. This year is going to be managed by Deputy Mayor Preger.
And I look forward to it.
Passing the, uh, we had a little bit in for one year. And I'm sure that it will be wonderfully run back. Everybody should take their children. There's a lot of, that's a father tutorial park.
It goes to the fire whistle.
The fire whistle.
Is what starts it.
Yeah.
Well, you know what's good about it is that the whole park's fenced in.
Yes.
Keeps the kids inside, and you don't have to worry about them blowing off.
Just stay off the bocce.
Have they done that yet?
Yes, it's not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nice.
Have the gentlemen been bocce?
Yes, they have. Italian bocce. Well, it's not a tag.
The Irish bocce.
Yeah, the Irish bocce.
That'd be great.
Motion to allow open containers wide.
Yes, they're undefeated.
In stroke baskets.
It should be great. And just, I'm just going to do the calendar quick first. The, um, the twenty-sixth, the following Saturday, is Tai Chi Opening Day, which is great. Charles has been doing that for.
Definitely.
The same, yeah. That's the same, same day. Then there's PYA Opening Day at nine for the parade, and then they come down Bay Avenue to Ride Apart. Powerful ceremony. That's the twenty-sixth. And the twenty, same day, something that's very exciting, is the Village Patch, the YMCA, sponsored by Nats Squeezy, and the American Arts Association, want you to know how to save a life. On that day, April twenty-sixth, they're going to have free CPR anytime training at Patchogue YMCA Healthy Kids Day. It's going to be a whole festival of sports and health-related booths and sponsors. And they're going to have thirty-minute trainings for CPR from eleven AM to two PM with a free take-on kit. This is something that is great. YMCA is very excited about having it. And the very next day is Sunday, the twenty-seventh, is they're having a five K run down at Short Front Park at nine o'clock. That's sponsored by YMCA and also the Village Patch. That should be a great run. It's their first year. You should all go down and at least walk it. I know they're having a little trouble with registration. It's definitely a heavy-duty five K month. The following Sunday, the fourth, is the River Avenue Five K, which starts at eight o'clock. So if you're a five K runner.
I'm not even a five K spec.
You walked once, so I think you were by my house.
That's what he did. He walked, he walked on Bell and Deck from York.
We made the three K of five hours.
Right.
Forever.
We had to keep photo.
That's right. That's right. We're listening over the radio.
In there, yeah.
So that's, the twenty-sixth is Tai Chi Opening Day, PYA Opening Day, and the YMCA CPR anytime event. That's going to be a great day. Next Saturday is Bunny Run, and that's as well. All right. All right. I'd like to request approval to hire Jared Dwyer, Michael Barafon, and Vino Fanci Leary as doc security at the rate of nine twenty-five per hour, effective five one twenty-fourteen.
Second.
And I'd like to request approval over fifteenth annual bunny run made on, at Father's Door Park on Saturday, April nineteenth.
And Sally wants to get a vote for the board.
Thank you.
Troy.
Can you hear the comments by the board? Oh, it can be heard.
I just had two quick things that I wanted to comment on. And the first one was congratulations again to Lori Devlin and the Arts Council for the grant. It's a big undertaking right now.
You were here as I was frantically trying to.
I was here on DD Day, which is dropped that day. It's got to be about two o'clock. The boy was like, but you, you did what you had to do, and it was, it was a great.
Yeah, we said you have everything, and then there's that one more thing you need.
Exactly right. But you got it. We're looking forward to working with you and getting things done there. The other thing in that vein that I wanted to mention, I should have mentioned it before, is today, and I didn't see anything on it, but I know today was the day that the Suffolk County ground grants were first, the applications were first available. Now, my project is going to be a public restroom, which we figured we'd, we'd pull off those down the road. But if there's something out there, and I know Mayor Panier and I have spoken about maybe some recreational type things that, you know, you mentioned bocce costs before if we have employed, but you know, some things in that light might be something that would be an eligible application for a grant.
What are, what are the parameters for the grant?
Got to be at least twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The, the greater the monetary match would, would, would be the greater leverage and the more points you'd get to, to achieve the grant. You can go beyond the twenty thousand. Or if you've got a hundred thousand dollar project, you can ask for fifty thousand dollars. It's a fifty percent match.
That's the same funding that did the two walkways or partly funded the walkways?
That was the, the directional signing that we did back in two thousand and five. And it was definitely the road walkway. I don't know that that was the theater walkway. I think that was.
Yeah, I think it's just the road walkway.
I think it was the road walkway, two thousand and eight somewhere around.
I think it's part of the theater walkway that goes around. I remember.
Could have been, but, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But the important thing to remember is that funding, the application for that grant comes out today. So if we do have a project that we want to maybe get on board with, then let me know and I'll sort the Marion Russo, so we're going to write grants as well, and then we get Lori. I will list Lori, because she's got some success, and we'll see if we can get done. So think about it. It's.
Help me, Cole. Like, I write a good narrative, but you can help me.
That's all I do. I do the narratives. You'll have Mary.
Could you, could you forward that?
I can, I can send you an email shortly. Okay? Thank you.
Dennis, Dennis, there's no, there's no limitations, right? I mean, we, if, let's say we might put toilet to short form, winter, winter ice toilet to short form for seventy-five thousand dollars. We could do that.
You could do that. There, I, I mean, there's five hundred thousand dollars total in the grant pool. So, I mean, if you had a project for a million dollars, I don't think we're going to give five hundred thousand dollars. They want to divvy it up. But if you have something, a project that you, you can partner some monies, and it's going to cost seventy-five thousand dollars.
Do they accept in-kind contribution?
Five percent of the match. So it's limited. You can't say half the, half the project's going to be in kind. It's five percent of the match. So if you had a fifty thousand dollar project, you'd have five percent of that that you could use as in-kind.
Are you thinking down here the trash?
Well, the trash shack is an ideal asset in the village because we don't have to work, you know? And, and it's right, it's right next to the sewer.
You know, then I'll just say, the guy on corn, he's doing very well. He doesn't have competition. We have to make a decision. Does this government compete with the?
Oh, the guy up the block.
The guy up the block. I saw him yesterday. Maybe we just throw it out right there as a roll.
Is that right in the gym?
Yeah, very, very right. And I just think if we, we would end up hurting him. If we, if they open back up again, one of us get five, six, ten hundred dollars a night. I'd rather see that guy in five business be successful. And that's not being in the food business or anything to do with it. You know, so we have to make a decision if we want to do that. But that being said, and that, that's just my first, that's something.
That's a good point. That's a good point. But if we had a nice recreational project, I mean, if, if we wanted to get, if we wanted to profit, we hadn't already done the cutting green down at Short Front Park, and we wanted to partner with that, I'm sure that would have been an eligible application for the, you know, for the grant.
We just can't.
You know what? It's got to be for the public use, though. It can't be, because you cannot charge your.
I don't think you're looking at, you know, shade structures and benches and those kind of things. I just, I was, I went down to the park yesterday. I just stood there and kind of watched and trying to get a, and there are dips, and it's just, it just really needs some real quality landscaping and sprinklers and.
Yeah, you know, I guess you take putting a ton of money down there, and every other year it's under three feet of water.
But it is a park.
It's, this, my thing, what we should do is we should come in a little bit, concentrate more on three eighty. Not the building, but.
The park area around three eighty and.
Right.
You want to, you have to get some time and take a walk, give it a little water in and make a couple ideas. I just kinda look at it as that parks are just, they're family gathering places.
Do you wanna put some sort of trail that goes from three eighty bay through the park?
Yeah, we, in fact, I wrote a grant for that, the walking.
Yeah, it goes a long time ago.
Yeah, it was.
Well, maybe you could reintroduce that maybe. Because it's sometimes soggy down there and it would be nice to have a decent walkway or trail.
Great idea. Well, we got stations where you could have, listen to birds and. It's, it was pretty cool, but.
Yeah.
We didn't get the grant because we, because we hadn't, we were designing our project around the grant. They want us to do a lot of the work, but then get the grant. The work we've done as far as the farm.
Well, maybe that's something that we use for this, because I think it would be useful.
I just really want to remind you that it's out there, it's available as of today. So projects like that, I'm sure I will show like a research of yours anymore. But what I do wanna say is there's a sixty-day term on this, which is not a lot of time to write a grant. So if we get what we need in the next two weeks, then we can go to work and try to make it come to fruition.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Bojek, Aitnaxen Street. I see Pam Seal is on vacation and she took her keys to the food stash.
Matt, oh, it's cold back here.
It's cold up here too.
It's comfortable. It's a moment like so. I just wanna follow up on the budget, okay? So at the last budget, at the last budget meeting, six hundred thousand dollars are taken to bring down the deficit. So that reduces the deficit to zero at that point?
Yeah. What we basically do is we take some of those as a standard to stabilize taxes and not have to raise taxes any day. But we've been doing that consent consistently. My, just the philosophical piece that I have is I hate to take money to do that because you have to replace it every year. But I also realized that to replace six hundred thousand dollars or five that to put in the year before, is a burden that we can't carry at this point in time. And I made the earlier comment about River Walk and New Village that will hopefully fill that gap. I'm gonna make a comment.
No, that's good. It's gonna make a difference. We still don't, we don't know exactly how much until the assessor tells us and we're still waiting.
Okay, so far through the same first question.
Yeah.
Three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars was then taken to in advance resolve the tax surcharge question, correct?
Yeah.
Those were three tax surcharges?
Yes, there were three from probably first brought in probably in two thousand and nine, ten. And we've been negotiating with them and trying to figure out a way around it.
All right. And will, will that payment come up before the board will be able to know who those three grievance were?
Yeah, in fact, I can give that now.
Yeah, I believe it was already approved.
Yeah. You can call them while you're employed.
Okay, one, two, okay, so.
I think there were two of them from Comptess, uh, River Avenue.
I don't recall the time they had, but they, but right now, but they were multi-year settlements. And then you often, you know, we are one of the smallest levels of government on a tax grievance basis. They grievance the town too.
Okay.
When the town approves the grievance, and what layer of government doesn't go long, that layer of government gets sued.
So in this instance, the town approved these reductions?
I can't see specifically with these, that's generally how they go.
Generally.
Because we are the smallest level.
Okay, so.
You know, just to decide, that takes into, I saw the headline today about tax maintenance for veterans and property and so forth.
Right.
You know, it's the only thing, if you and I were a village ourselves, we'd have taxed you a hundred dollars and my taxes were a hundred dollars. But now I get a tax rebate and that brings me down to sixty, sixty dollars. You don't get it. It's a forty-dollar swing down. Now you're paying a hundred and forty dollars. So the shame about it is, is that the tax grievance, surcharges that was put in place will reduce their taxes. They now get spread amongst the rest of the residents in the village and rest of property.
Right, so that's, that's the impact, the return impact, right?
Yeah, that's, that's the impact that you deal with. That's what the reason, really fighting and negotiating and you're working as best you can work them. But as, you know, Terry Eaton said, once another level approves it, it's very difficult for us not to.
Okay, well, probably ten, okay. All right, so the last question I have is about the condos and garbage pickup condos. So I'm a little, all right, let's start one. You know, you know, when you get into all these things, garbage refuse is not one of my skills. I don't really have a lot to say about it, so I'm happy to learn real quickly. So now it's five hundred dollars per condo, what, what, one, one unit in a condo?
Yes.
Per unit, okay. And before then it was over six hundred dollars.
Six hundred and ten dollars.
And that's not even including the projected rate that's gonna come, right?
No, we have only one, one, one.
Okay, and these would be now, exactly how many condo units of the village actually service?
Right now, we service. I'll tell you the same. Eighty, seventy-one, one fifty, thirty-six, one eighty-six right now.
One hundred and sixty units?
Yeah, that doesn't count all the cleros on the other side of the street. Pick up another eleven.
One sixty-one more.
Hundred and sixty.
Hundred and sixty. You know, that's a lot of money, isn't it?
Yes.
To look over a ten-year period of time, you're talking about, what, a quarter million dollars? Three hundred thousand dollars, one hundred thousand dollars in most revenue?
Well, it's not most revenue, because the, the time it takes to do it, the concern that I have, right? I think now trustee can say it very clearly, is because of the homeowners association, they would have the right to pull out from.
And that's the most revenue.
And that, there was the most revenue.
Are they threatening to do that now?
Well, they're talking savings.
What's that talking about?
Taxpayer savings. Yeah.
Proceeding, you're delivering a significant savings to the individual taxpayer.
It's a savings for them. And it, it's just that the fact that that job to pick up the garbage there is not the same as it, as when they do my own. Where they do Cedar, the sixty odd homes that are on Cedar Avenue. That takes a better part of.
Hundred and eighty homes would take about three hours.
Yeah.
Hundred and eighty cars would take you about. What I saw, I saw a rate switching on time that takes to pick up the garbage and punish.
It's, it's on all of those, it's, it's the cost to do it.
It's fair.
It, it, it takes in the cost of the manpower, it takes, it takes in wear and care on vehicles, workers comp is part of that. All of those costs.
Tipping fees.
Tipping fees. All of those costs round out what we charge. They put into, into the, into the calculator, come out with a number. You know, your tipping fees are a certain sixty-three, sixty-three dollars a ton. What you pay for your manpower, the, the wear and care on vehicles to do the condo is they stop three times. You do sixty-two homes on Cedar Avenue, you probably stop twenty times. They're stopping every three or four homes. They're stopping, they're stopping. The men are going with the backyards and putting, they're single-family homes with three and four people in the home. You mow the garbage, there's a lot more. Sometimes it comes down to a sense of fairness. It's the same reason that you do senior citizen discounts. It's not based upon, it's based upon their age, it's based upon their salary. But it's importantly, it's based upon the fact that senior citizens, by nature, it's two bags, it's two bags. Most of the times, the garbage men know that this is a senior, that person only wraps it. They won't even take a, take a bucket of it or this way. They know they're pulling out one bag, they're pulling out two bags. It's the fact that we don't need to put men on their property to pick up the brush and pick up. You have very, very, very few local businesses. You know, my neighbor down a block cut a tree down. The amount of stuff he's gotta send in his front yard will take two men a half hours to forty minutes. And so they'll take a half hour to do that. You don't get any of those costs within a condo development, you don't get the costs.
I'm, I'm gonna process all these different factors. Um, I, I do say, no, this, it's capped at five hundred dollars forever. Is that also the case?
No.
You can change it next year?
We've been lucky in that, well, what'll, what'll happen now, that becomes the number. If there's any rate, let's, let's say we raise garbage fees next year three percent. They'll go fifteen dollars, the six tent will go up, eighteen dollars.
So that's their new base, right?
No, yeah, it's the base. That just becomes another number in our calculations.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, my name is Megan Miller. I just have a question.
Wait a minute, Megan.
I'm sorry.
Okay, address?
Um, seven with a lane in Embleton. I just have a question in regards to meter parking and how long has it been in force? And, you know, where, you know, is it funding lanes to improve the deficit?
Yes, I'll leave that to my department guru. The meters were, were put in, put in, you know, back on January second of this year. Enforcement began, I guess, very, very early. And the money that people are putting into the parking meters will go fund new parking lots, improve lighting, paving, resurfacing, striping, security, code enforcement, all those things. It goes into a specific fund to do that. It doesn't go into the general fund. It goes into the parking fund to pay for, for instance, we have to buy properties to build new parking lots. So that money is going to there. So the money you put as an out-of-towner into the machine in a few more years will give you the opportunity to park closer, to barbecue or wherever you're going if you go.
Okay.
Well.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Kim, uh, Ms. Miller, first. Mr. Kim, Amanda Miller, in person, if you could speak to us.
Josephine Miller, two seven six, West End. I'm just curious about the garbage. The people down on Ocean Avenue in Pulte, they have been paying the regular rate all this time?
Yeah.
Wow, how do they feel about the fact that there's suddenly a reduction? Are they gonna, are they gonna ask for a refund?
No, because it's, you can't get a refund or something.
I, I'm curious as to what prompted the move.
I, I admit for the people down, I, I mean, we love the homeowners association, so I keep, we keep in good contact with all of them. I met with them a couple of weeks ago and we were just talking about the different things in the village. And it came up as part of the discussion. And the more, the more they talked about it, and the more I questioned them about how much they bring out, what they do, it just became very obvious to me that.
You've been paying that fee a long time.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why I was just curious. Thank you.
Mr. Kim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees. I'd like to discuss the resolution passed tonight regarding garbage pickup. I do not feel that this is a, a very good idea. I do not feel that it is equitable because the Village of Patchog has at least five different tax rates. A blanket fee for one family, two family, three family, four family, and five family, that I'm aware of.
And I'm not of six.
Okay. And there's also a section for owner-occupied dental offices, law offices, et cetera. I don't know what the rate is because the rate schedule is posted online as this information is available in the clerk's office. It's not available online.
It's not available online.
Okay. The fact of the matter is that the, the rates are not equitable considering the fact that the Village of Patchog pays so much per ton to get rid of the garbage. Okay, now, you have commented that it takes much longer to collect the garbage from residential houses on Cedar Avenue.
Which I didn't say.
Versus a pickup from these condos. And I assume these condos use a dumpster or something like that. Oh, they don't. So they have thirty-two gallon cans, is that correct?
Yep.
Well, and then I, then I do have a problem with. To lose a hundred and ten dollars by one blanket resolution tonight where the public would not permitted any input prior to the vote, I think that this matter should be reconsidered. And I'd like to ask if you will do that.
No.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Kim, it's, it's thirty-five thousand dollars a year, I believe. Assuming there are three hundred and fifty condos in the village for a hundred bucks a piece, right? It's thirty-five thousand dollars on a two million dollar revenue stream. Is that really material?
Sir, everything is material. As of two weeks ago, when the village budget was discussed, I brought up the topic of garbage collection, garbage fees, garbage rates. And it was stated, and, and it was unanimous amongst the board that to privatize the garbage collection service would give a one percent decrease. Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. Man?
We agreed to what?
We answered.
I asked a question.
We said it, it would increase, we privatized, based upon the, the research, the study we had done two years ago. And that's a few decrease.
Mr. Man.
No, Mr. Kim. Please, don't, don't say it didn't happen.
Well, Mr. Man, at one time you also made a statement that the Village of Patchog had an agreement when they were dealing with the town of Brookhaven. And that was not true at all because I foiled the town of Brookhaven.
Stop.
The Village of Patchog did not have any contract at all with the town of.
You don't listen to me in a sense. The town of Brookhaven charges ninety-three dollars a ton. We went out to bid out of sixty-three dollars.
That's not what I'm talking about.
No, that's what I'm talking about. Did it, we, the town of Brookhaven, you what, you guys, the town of Brookhaven, did we have an agreement? When you asked them, you'd already changed to a different.
No.
Then I don't want you to talk.
This is all in the minutes. I asked a question, you gave me an answer, that there was an agreement. An agreement between the Village of Patchog and the town of Brookhaven. I foiled the town of Brookhaven. There was no contract at all with the town of Brookhaven.
An agreement for what? An agreement for what?
A contractual agreement.
For what?
For, for dump rates, for refuse.
You definitely did not say that. Because we haven't had a contract with the town of Brookhaven since they raised their tipping fee. And we went out, as you enjoy studying the minutes, you well know that we put it out to bid with a private contractor and got this, an award rating rate that's almost identical to what the town of Southampton got. Because the town of Southampton used to dispose of the town of Brookhaven, and they shifted to a private disposal yard. As you know, as a student of the minutes, we went out to bid and awarded a rate that is almost thirty dollars less than what the town of Brookhaven's tipping fee was. And this was when Supervisor Lesko was first in office. So the answer is, that is correct. We do not have an agreement with the town of Brookhaven, because our agreement is with Eastern Recycling. Correct.
This is prior, prior to that agreement. I talked prior to that agreement.
Prior to that agreement, we had one place to dump, and it was the town of Brookhaven.
Absolutely.
So of course we had an agreement to dump it then, because they said what the tipping fees were.
Okay.
There was no contract.
Mr. Kim, Mr. Kim, you're going into history. Whether that history's taking you isn't where I'm going tonight. We're not gonna sit here and listen to you dredge up history in two thousand and seven, eight, nine. If you've got a point to make tonight, you gotta request to make, make it. But don't get into, into a debate with me over where we get rid of our garbage.
All right.
It's not a debate you wanna go. Because I got a gamble here, I'll close the meeting on you.
Mr. Man, the present situation is that one family, two family, three family, four family, five family. So on and so forth. To have a blanket fee for one family of, let's say, five hundred dollars, and just because it becomes two family, then it's doubled or more, more than doubled.
But it's two families. It's a business. People are getting revenue.
But the, the rates are just not, not equal when.
It's a business.